Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, March twenty first. Join me in the, I'd like to call the meeting to order and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment? No, I don't see any public comments. Additions to the agenda? Do you guys have any additions?
I don't think so.
Uh, reading and approval minutes. Have you guys had a chance to read the minutes from last week?
I moved to approve. And I'll second.
Then moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass is three to zero. Commissioner comments and committee reports.
Michelle, do you have printed agenda over there for me?
I have an extra one.
Just don't, I thought I. I have a great one.
I'm sure you did.
The only guy I would comment on is we, I've had several people test about the property evaluations and have concerns about that. So that's really not the way I've been here. Um, I did see where Johnson County went up thirty percent, I think they said. So it could be worse. Just saw the news this morning, so. Uh, I had a kneecap meeting Thursday night at my loft, which I attended. Nothing new to report there. And tomorrow we're having the, uh, going to the Jefferson County for the highway officials, uh, meeting at Oskoala. So I know I'll be attending. I think you're going to.
Yeah, I'm planning on it. Um, I have two things. I'll just piggyback on, uh, Commissioner Rivas, because I'm also hearing from, uh, taxpayers on, um, their nervousness after the valuations went up. And I can tell you, this is the part of being a county commissioner. That makes you not popular because you're asking hard questions and just making sure that I have a handle on what's being spent, uh, within the county budget and, you know, looking at analysis um, of every department and asking hard questions so that I can, uh, look at all of my constituents in the eye and tell them that I am giving it my all to, uh, pinch pennies on their behalf, so, um. The second thing is the, uh, Atchison County Community High School fundraiser, uh, Dairy, Dairyland Donkey Basketball is this Saturday, uh, March twenty fifth at seven P M. And I'm not sure how I got myself roped into that, but I'm riding.
You think you're running.
I was like, I heard fundraiser and so I was like all in and now I'm getting a little nervous, but it'll be okay. As long as I don't come back with like a sling or something next week.
Remember the donkeys been doing this a lot longer than you have.
I know. They post, they post old videos and I'm like, yeah, I shouldn't watch those because that could be bad. So, um, if anyone is free Saturday night to come out and laugh at, at me attempting to ride a donkey and support the, uh, community high, Atchison County Community High School, um.
Have you notified Cory with B M S so they could have an ambulance there?
I know. So I know someone said they should have a vet on site. I'm like, you need D M S on site if I'm gonna try to ride. It'll be, it'll be interesting. So I've never ridden one, so first time for everything. Um, okay, reports of elected officials and department heads, um, Brian Oswald, you are up with the twenty twenty-three mowing bid openings.
I think we only got three, right?
We did check the box this morning because then we were running live last night.
Start with Van Knight.
That's the opener, man.
Yeah. Okay, so he's got each one, uh, individual mowing, uh, per mowing bid for all properties, four hundred and ninety dollars on, uh, Van Knight. He's got a certificate of, uh, mowing, so.
Who was that?
Uh, Van Knight. And he's got it separated into each individual place too on, uh, each one of them.
And did you separate the courthouse out for?
Yes, we, we separated them all. So, uh, the rescue storage and, uh, emergency services, he's got, everybody's got that separate, so yeah.
So the edging and the landscaping and all the things are part of that.
Are into that part, yeah.
Okay.
With the work that they kind of, you know, the sidewalk over there, there's about a six foot square area.
Maybe different, isn't it? Yes.
And I wonder if we could maybe work out something with, uh, the chief of services and say on that building next to it, man, take care of it. They're a partner of ours, maybe they would do a stupid, uh, mow it a little bit.
Sure. Okay, C and D mowing, uh, they've got it, uh, total package. They did not uh, break down one and two on each one, but, uh, they did break it down. Uh, they've got three hundred and fifty dollars per mowing, per mowing each time for all of them. A little different on each one, a hundred and fifty, seventy-five and a hundred and twenty-five, which that's pretty close to what, uh, Van Knight's have on. outfit. Uh, they're right on even with the low three fifty. So they're neck and neck on that, uh, it's a little different in between each one.
What's the person's name?
Uh, Lawrence Chow. And, uh, the C and D is, uh, lot mowing, C and D lot mowing. Well, I don't know that, uh, I don't know that I'm ready. I don't know if you guys are ready to make a decision on that. At least we've read them publicly and they know what we've got. Uh, I don't, I don't think that, uh, I'm ready to make a decision.
Did any of them make, uh, choose not to bid on it?
None of them, they all bid.
Bid on all. Okay, that makes it easier.
Yeah.
You wanna make a couple of calls on the two bids and yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna verify some. Come back next week with a recommendation.
Absolutely, yeah. Because I think there are things that, uh, are seen and unseen still yet, but, uh, I think, uh, at least they're all very close.
Yeah. Sorry, thank you.
Very much. We'll get ahold of each one of them and, uh, nobody reached out to do any pre-bid stuff, but we did a good job of sending out the areas so they all are aware of that. But I just wanna clarify that we are doing what we're doing, you know? Uh, because it seems like, uh, if we don't get that, then, uh, we're not gonna have the right services that we need.
You might cheer up the chief of services at a little spot too.
Yeah, I will. And I, I noticed that over there. Uh, the only thing that I worry about is, okay, we, you do this and then, uh, we're falling snow, but, uh, you know, I don't know, you know, are we trading services? And to that, then that, that backfires on me and, uh, then we're cleaning another parking lot.
Look, but these guys mowing it may change because it's different.
Yeah, if they do, if we find out which ones mowing that, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, last year I do know that, uh, but we'll see who's getting it this year. Yeah, and that'd make a huge, like you say, they're right there, make a huge difference. Yeah. But, uh, okay, that's what I'll do. Uh, other than that, you know about where we're at, uh, coming with the traders and all that, so. Uh, getting ready to go. Let's, uh, see what, uh, next week does and, uh, we'll get you guys in your spot and then down here.
You wanna see a little more about that for the public here as far as the traders office?
What we're gonna do, uh, I hope for the public to know that, uh, the biggest thing is we're trying to do it for safety. Uh, the second biggest thing that I'm trying to do is save money for the public, so, uh, it's, we're dragging and dragging. It's something that we've, uh, been working on for a while now. But the drag is the, the money saving part. Uh, we're trying to move them to, uh, save money on, uh, just in all the, uh, timing of getting in there. Uh, we're gonna cut in windows to put the public out in the hallway instead of entering into the room.
The zone of the treasures office.
Yeah, the treasures office, yeah. And then we will, uh, change some desks around in there and, uh, make one little uh, adjustment for a private office in there too. So I can't, you know, as far as details, those things could change, but that's what we're doing is remodeling the treasures office. And, uh, we're gonna do most of that work in-house, which will save thousands of dollars for the taxpayer.
And so relocate to the commission room.
They'll relocate down to here. Uh, we'll put up signage and everything to, uh, move people down and, uh, show them where to go and stuff like that. And with the elevator, that shouldn't be a problem. Uh, we should, you know, handicap access will be really good and, uh, we'll clear our hallway to make sure that we've got that all the time, so. And then we'll go as fast as we can to get them back up there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Get that. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Joe Snyder, Rowan Bridge, Ottawa Road, Spring Cost Share this week.
How's everybody this morning?
Good, how are you?
I think I sent everybody all the information I had. If we fix the tubes and the box culverts and we mill and mix in nine inches of base and put four inches of asphalt on top, it comes up to four point eight million dollars. Twenty percent of that's for four miles. That's from two sixty-two to where Ottawa turns to go to Potter or Osborne starts. Uh, then we will have some engineering fees on top of that, which would probably be another probably two hundred thousand dollars. But twenty percent of all that's gonna be over a million dollars. I tried to put this together, you know, we really need to, my opinion, we need to sit down and and figure out how we wanna approach it, but that's way past what our budget can can handle if we were awarded that, the nine, or, you know, million dollars co-pay. I just wanted you guys to be aware of, this is what I've looked at. There's another way we can do it. We can chip and seal it to save the asphalt. Uh, everybody, you know, knows asphalt on top of it is better than chip and seal. But my opinion is, and you guys, whatever you wanna decide to do, how do we come up with the resources to favor this if we were to be selected? And part of the tubes and lengthening the tubes and the boxes is part of what K dot has sent us in our local road safety plan that they want done, which we could have applied for, for H triple R. But introducing it into this would help because that would take care of that problem and maybe make us a little more attractive to being selected for this type of project. But my question is, what, what do you guys? We don't have the resources to, to do this.
So add that in, how much was that, add that in?
Uh, I, I don't have that exact figure. That was just fixed. The tubes needs fixed. They need fixed anyhow in the widening. I mean, why we're, why we're milling it, it needs to be done. So I don't, I don't have that split out. Here was, uh, just reclamation and put nine inches of semen in there was nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So right at a million for those four miles to mill it up and put semen in there without touching any culverts or anything like that. And then see if I can read the rest of this. So estimated two hundred, here it is right here. Did you guys, did you guys get this one?
That's.
From Swabie.
Yeah.
Where it says eight hundred and forty thousand dollars a mile includes all of that and then two hundred and forty-six thousand per miles of extensions, five box extensions.
I forgot it was in there, I'm sorry.
Or existing structures. So we went out and we physically, we looked at the culverts. They took pictures of them. We sent them to Dave, what needed to be done, and this is where he came back with on this sheet right here.
This has the widening and the.
The four point eight does, yes.
Yeah.
But, but right here, if you wanna, you know, if you don't fix the boxes.
You're right.
You're saving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right, so. And how, so if we get this awarded, would they, was there a chance that we split it out and say, well, we're gonna do the boxes and not the paving?
So we can, we can apply for two miles. We can apply to do part of it. But that doesn't necessarily mean that next year we're gonna get the rest of the money to, we'd have to apply again or come up with our own money to make that work.
They always say that, but what really happens? I mean.
Well, we've never, we've never gotten any money on roads.
Okay.
All we've ever got is bridges. We've been very fortunate on our bridges, but we've been through this with two eighty-sixth. And here we are with Ottawa. And, uh, you know, we have to, uh, let them know it's a main thorough through from county to county, three different highways. You know, we've gotta make it as attractive as we can, but there's no guarantee that we're gonna give anything.
To me, it don't look like it would be as attractive as two eighty-six for us. I mean, because airport, you know, all of it's industrial park and on there, so.
Then also accessibility, this is the three different elevators. You know, that's, there's a farming part, you have elevator B, A and.
I'm not saying, no, no, no. And I'm just, that's my analysis. Like, if we didn't get it to two eighty-six.
This is where, you know, I'd like to have, uh, another meeting. We need to have another meeting on a Friday so we can discuss, uh, what our plans are and how we're gonna approach it. I don't want to, my personal opinion, don't wanna jump into something and we have no way of paying for it.
Well, if we go for two miles pavement, but all the boxes and extensions across the whole four miles, would that be, that's gonna bring the cost down probably about half or?
Well, at half, that would be, let's just say we have to come up with five, say we have to come up with five or six hundred thousand out of our own.
That gets a lot easier.
Right, but it's not in the budget.
So if it's awarded this year, do you have to spend it this year?
It has to be into next year.
Twenty twenty-four, yeah, so.
So it has to be.
It's the reason we need the numbers so we know what to.
So this has to be turned in Thursday.
Oh.
So. And that's what having them, here it is. Uh, five to six months to complete it. And then that's what them inspecting, making sure whoever does the work is doing it. I mean, that's full-time inspection. We could back that off, but putting the twelve inch aggregate shoulder in. And then all the surveying and everything. Yeah, we would have to do it within, within a year, I believe it is.
You plan for the whole thing and they award the whole thing. Do we have the option of saying, we only wanna do this much? So what's your, your end?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know this has came up fast, but everything's not really fast this spring.
Well, you guys were talking about this last year.
Right.
It's, it's been a couple of years, so it's not really new to me.
And we can, and we can apply for fall cost share. I mean, if we wanna, if we don't want to do this today, then we can decide what we wanna do and get prepared for fall. Uh, but we have to, you know, we all know we have to do something at some point with this road.
Can we just at least apply for the extensions and, uh, and the culvert repair and get that?
Okay, so that, I could've done that on H triple R, but then you're two or three years out on getting that done. So like if it's, if you apply for this year, it's two years before you get that.
It's in the, I mean.
I mean.
Well, but I think that, I know where you're, you're saying that we need to do something to the road before that, so we hate it to be fixing road and then going back and doing culverts.
Yeah, I see, and that's, that's, that's where I'm at if, if, uh, if we're gonna fix it, I mean, maybe we do, do we do a mile a year? Do we apply for one mile? But then it's gonna be on us to figure out how to do the other, you know, that's just getting to Curlew. And that's not taking care of Osborne all the way.
So Sage, you apply Thursday. How long before we know?
Usually it's a couple of months. I would have to look, usually a couple of months.
Still be well within budget sees. I mean.
Yes, hopefully, yes. Usually I think it's in May.
Okay, well, so I'm trying to figure, you know, we done, uh, like you said, go to the fall to apply. Budget's already cooked. I mean, we really can't do anything with our budget at that time. Here, if we apply now, it makes sense to, to adjust our budget or incorporate it into the budget process in the fall. We the budget already be cooked for two, twenty twenty-four.
Right, but also I guess we can do it this way. If we don't get it, then we're, we're gonna have, we need to be figuring out between now and then worst case scenario, all right? We don't get anything. What are we gonna do to improve this road and how are we gonna come up with the resources to get that done?
Yeah.
I think it's very important. Uh, I can get ahold of Dave when I leave and we'll get the ball rolling on this, but at the same time, if it's awarded, you can't say I don't want it because they'll never, we'll never get money ever again.
Right, yeah.
And I'm, you know, so, uh, this is just, this is just what, what we came up with as quick as we could. I mean, is there, there's other ways you could do chip seal instead of?
Well, even if we paid for the extensions and boxes and stuff on our own and then chip and seal, we're still better off than spending over five million bucks. I know it's not permanent.
We would, we would still have to, we would still have to, uh, mill the road and put the stabilization in there. That has to happen.
Okay.
Because there's no base.
Yeah.
Because there's no base, so that.
Yeah.
That part has to happen.
Yeah.
Is there any chance we can apply for, like in our letter, like explain to them our situation, like we need four miles of four point eight million, but we only have available funds to match a, a mile or two at a time, like just so they know, like, we've, we have a long-term plan. We know what we need, but we also don't wanna pass up on a funding opportunity when you, does that make sense? Like?
Or do we just go for two mile now and and say, and then put the letter in that our intention is to keep on going with this. This is all we can swing at this time.
Okay, so then, which we can do that. We can, we can put in there the whole four and we start with two. But if we don't get the funding, then we're gonna have to come up with a way to do the other two.
Well, we'll, we'll have to do that, I mean, yeah.
But I mean, when we apply.
I feel sometimes you're wanting multiple answers ahead of time and get the same conversation over and over. I mean, we gotta put our name, the name ahead.
Right, I agree.
To move on, you know, we.
All right.
But are, are you saying that we have to do the other?
So if we, if we send in, the way I understand it, if we send in, this is a four-mile project, we're, we're wanting two miles. We wanna start with two miles. That doesn't guarantee us that they're gonna give us the other two miles.
Correct.
Money, period. And we would have.
Buy.
But we, we could, but we would still, and I will talk to David today because we're saying that we still will need to finish up with the other two miles. It's not something I think we just can just drop it. That's, that's what I'm getting at. We just can't.
Oh, no. I mean, the whole thing needs to be fixed. I mean, we're gonna have to.
But we can do it either way. We can apply, we can apply for a mile at a time. We can apply for two. I don't think personally that we wanna apply for less than the two miles.
The, the box extensions and everything, they're not all within that two miles. They're spread out farther.
So they are spread out throughout that four miles.
So we, we should do all those, I think. I mean, don't you?
Well, yes, I think that, and that falls in part of the local road safety plan, which would make it more attractive to them if we're trying to do this.
Exactly.
Because I'm like you, if, if we would've applied for H triple R and then we get it in two years, then we go and we do this, then they're gonna tear all that out. And we don't wanna do that. And this is, this is small compared to, uh, two eighty-six as far as the culverts and the, in the boxes, you know, the sizes and everything on getting them fixed. But we also wanna realize that as we're finding out, when we bid these, they're coming in higher than what our estimates are.
They're starting to go down either.
No, not anytime soon, so, uh, would we, do we wanna go for two miles, put the whole four mile project in and ask for two miles, or do you wanna ask for the whole thing?
I think you should ask for two miles.
Yeah.
But include the letter that we have four miles of need, but based on our current funding.
Eight miles.
Right.
Well, yeah, we do. It is, it is.
But based on our current funding that we can utilize the match, like we only can
Okay.
swing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Are we, we probably do two miles every year for the next four years and?
Yeah.
I mean, this, go for it, go for it.
And then not to take this conversation off the table that we keep talking about funding, how?
See, and that, and that's, that's, that's why, I don't wanna, no. No, we still need to have a plan, yes.
Trying to get us to do, and you know, I, at every conference, at everything, I'm asking, you know, and people are utilizing sales tax and people are utilizing ARPA funds. People are utilizing different things, but I have a hard time of the sales tax piece will be one thing if it's a small increment and we have a beginning and an end and we, we tell the public what that is. Because Ottawa Road, although it does affect a lot of people, it's not like majority of people. So sometimes like sales tax projects I've seen successful or like a jail or, or something that benefits the majority of, you know, how to do that. And I don't know that you can.
Everyone uses.
That, if.
Everybody seems like they have a stake in it.
Yes, and I don't know enough about sales tax. If you can drill down beyond
There's a.
Just the county, like can you drill down to the area, like a township that utilizes, that's it, that the roads in? Like, I don't know those answers.
You can create tax in districts and there's different rules for that now. That, that, that's a get a tax attorney to get that for sure, you know?
But I'm just, you know, just, I've, I've tried to brainstorm as many options and ask and network and find, you know, funding opportunities, but.
My, my main concern is, is once we start trying to get it finished.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. Try to, try to get it finished. And you guys have been really good with that and that, but that's a concern of mine, you know, making sure that we follow through. We don't, you know, like two eighty-six is a lot better. We can fix it, but it's a lot better.
Well, we've got a base on that.
Right.
And so the
Right.
The things that we've done have really improved it a little and it seems to be holding very well. I mean.
This, this road's, this road, just there's no base, period. So. Uh, so you want me to ask for two miles? So make sure.
All the culverts for four miles, but the maybe for two miles, that's what I was thinking, is that, that, that would be fine.
Yeah, if they'll, if they'll do it that way. Okay, cuz I will talk to Dave today and then I will probably email you guys back what, and the information.
And we should have enough we have in the budget to cover two miles.
Well, it'll be our budget coming up.
Right. So if we're successful, we could do the twenty twenty-four.
But it will be an increase. We'll have to increase to cover that.
Right.
That's the reason I'm saying it needs to happen when we're doing our budget, cuz we don't have.
Yeah, but when's, when do you find out the?
May, May or June.
So, so I will.
And I take it it would probably be, you'd start from do the north two miles?
Yes, I, I believe that's what I'd like to do. It started two sixty-two and go south, south for like two forty-two, and then the next time I go from two forty-two to, uh, it's like four point one miles. So.
Yeah.
And then go to Curlew.
That's make your logical stop in place, yeah. The area from the county line north that was tore up before, is that holding good?
Fair. We probably need to do a little patching in a couple of spots on that.
Okay.
But it's, it's not doing too bad. When they patched, we patched a couple of spots on it last year, but then from there to Curlew, it's, it's just like this. From where we quit, there in Oliver's to Curlew, it's just as bad as Ottawa. So, all right, what else did I have? Uh, the starting soon signs, we found one of them, the wind had tore them up, so I'm in the process of getting a little bit better signs to put up when projects are Being made, the made. Bridge is supposed to start here in middle of April. E five fourteen three is actually what the other one is, it's supposed to be starting here soon. I'm just, I'm just gonna say soon, cuz I'm not gonna promise any dates. And then, uh, site one on three tenth. They just staked it out, was supposed to stake it out yesterday, we gotta go look, so that the water district can figure out what they're gonna do about looting their line. So we have a. They have an easement, and then. They wanna, they wanted to sell it, so we have a permanent easement, and then they have a. Did I send that to you, then I did have the working temporary construction easement on that also? Did I forward that to you?
I don't recall seeing that, but.
Okay, I will, I'll make sure, I thought I did, but.
Well, I'm not gonna say you didn't, but I don't, I don't recall seeing it.
Okay.
Do we have a? Bridge on the Jackson County line that we're working on?
Okay, was something said to you about that?
Well, a commissioner asked me about it Thursday.
So, you remember when, uh, I asked you about that bridge? Out on the Jackson County line, a real long one. Okay, so I had talked to them a year ago. About, you know, it's our bridge, it's on your road, what do you guys think? Well, the other day. Uh, when their, uh, public works director came to get some noxious weeds stuff. He said they would be willing to go in half on that bridge. If we. Chose to apply for it. So. That's all that was said, I mean, I just asked him about it, cuz it's a bridge, it's, needs either be replaced or not replaced, but they would be willing to go half the expense. If we applied for, but we'd have to get all that in writing and all that.
That, even at half price, that's still a major all for, that's a long bridge, I'm a dirt road. And I, I hate shutting bridges down, but you know, when, when we've got Ottawa road projects, and we've got two eighty six road projects and everything, you know, it's like. I mean, I, I would think it'd be maybe worth looking at, but I.
I haven't made it, I just had talked to them about it.
Okay.
That's it.
And the day we were up there, I, we did not, we just turned around, came back across it, so I don't know if that's a major connector for them to get access to more or not, is it connect on up further north?
It just goes right up the county line all the way north.
Yeah, maybe it's more, more a major road than we think, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
So dirt road, you know?
Yeah, I, I don't understand, I just asked him, you know, this was one of the bridges that was on the list to be replaced and.
Find out more about that maybe.
Okay, yeah, I'm not gonna.
Yeah.
Cuz I was surprised that he brought that up the other day.
I like the offer, though, we have to do this, we gotta.
Yeah. But so. Then that's the, those are decisions we're gonna have to. We're gonna have to make, am I out of time? Or do I have?
Uh, no, you're still good, you have a, a update at ten thirty five, so you're good.
Okay, well, I'll just kinda, you guys have any other questions? Everything in the office is going good right now. Everything is quiet. Really quiet. That's good. Uh, we hired another one Friday, we had another interview, we had set up five interviews, three people showed up. So, but that's, that's far.
Was it Friday, then, did you hire a mechanic yet, or no?
Uh, pending, uh, physical.
Nice.
So. Then we have, I have another interview this Friday. For one, so.
For the office?
Nope, that's for, uh. A, another mechanic, and then we did put out the, uh, office clerk job. Yesterday. So. Uh, of course, I haven't heard anything on that yet. Uh, we're just, we're blatant, we're getting ready to put in some tubes if the weather will cooperate. Usually. And I'm gonna try to get everything ready to start our, our part of our projects, the chip and seal, so. That's what we've got going on. I mean.
We're just breaking, it's gonna get busy.
Put in, we put in our new induction system from the noxious weed building, we did that yesterday, it's gonna get wired up, it'll be all ready to go. Uh. And then there's something to, are we? Uh. Where are we headed in the building thing, or the land thing, or, or whatever that's? Stuff that we need to, I would really like to have another Friday meeting to go over some of this stuff. If you guys are willing.
You wanna just, um, shoot us some dates that are available, or?
Well, possibly do anything.
I don't know, but. Well, you wanna have a workshop regardless for other things?
Well, I'd like to, I mean, better, we're gonna have to come in, we might have to come in next Tuesday early, so we can talk about what, what you got, what our plan is, or, cuz we kinda just kinda stalled.
Well, we're here Friday for that, um. Policy. Are you guys going to stay around after that for that?
I have to fly out of here, I've got a girl, my son's getting his promotion.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
What time does that start?
It starts at nine, we can.
Well, I have a, I have a. I have an interview at eight thirty.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
But just at some point in time, some point in time, I mean, either that or we do it during the meeting or whatever we need to talk about.
Oh, yeah, we could do that, I gave us hour sessions with the department head.
Yeah, I think if we just, we can do a couple thirty minute sessions, it probably cover a lot of things we're gonna talk about.
Yeah, I just.
A lot of stuff, just a matter, we had, even forward, I mean.
I, I guess that's what I'm trying to say is, we need to make sure that we.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's awful easy to get off on something else and we leave that on the back burner and then. It comes up, so. Well. It's about all I've got.
Can you be here a little bit earlier on Tuesday, I think thirty or eight forty five? Yeah, it's tough for me to get, cuz I got cattle and stuff to go to.
Okay.
I can help you with that. Get your shoulder make a big blows on. It's been a while.
Well, I'll, I'll go get on the phone with Dave and. See what we can get done on that and let you guys, I'll email. And then I'll get you that statute. And then I'll find out the rest of that information for tomorrow. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Hey, Corey Scott, Emergency Medical Services Director, Approval Purchase Order out of state travel.
Hey, sir.
Form. Uh, this is the same conference we sent an employee to last year, I was worried teams with what they brought back from that. Uh, we were doing this pre-COVID, I wanna get back into that, that's really what our training budget is for, and. It does a lot of good when they bring back new tools and techniques and teach it, so. Same thing we're doing, uh, this time, he had some flight points apparently built up, so we're not on the hook for the flights, I like that too. Nice, so. Yep.
Awesome, alright, do I have a motion to authorize travel, uh, and expense report? Um, for an EMS employee in the amount of thirteen hundred and ninety five dollars? Um, for a conference, May eighth to tenth.
Where?
Uh, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Micro motion.
Hey, it's moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
You did it in your budget in previous years, just, just kinda.
Yeah.
For a couple of years.
Yeah, I always kinda split the training budget between local training and maybe one or two.
Yeah.
Distance learning things. Uh, I've got another one coming up that we're gonna try to do via Zoom. And see how that works out and see if that's, that's a reasonable. Thing too, but a lot of what's in this conference is hands-on tools and techniques, and I, I don't think anything does it. And they're always in places that people wanna go, they, they don't do them in nondestination locations, so people like to go to these, so I think, I think it's a good thing.
Awesome. Uh, speaking of budget, um, Wes came this morning and talked about the utilities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so just stay on course with what you've been doing for our budget, and then we'll discuss it, um, in our workshop.
Okay, and I have been compiling those numbers, so I can do it either way.
Okay, well.
Really not a lot of work one way or the other, so I could do it both ways if you'd like, and then you can see.
I mean, I, I just think it's cleaner to run the E O C utilities under your budget, but that's. Um, again, I, I was.
Sure, both ways, yeah, I, I can do it.
Okay.
Both ways, it's not a tremendous amount. Long as I've got a, um. A goal to hit, I can do it, that's fine.
Okay. Awesome, and then we have the EMS commission report, um, also on today's agenda.
Yeah, and that's the normal monthly report, I don't have anything special or out of line with that, so, um. Pretty standard, the employees do a good job, I don't have to worry about much there, that. It follows pretty. Pretty normal trends, the only thing I would say in this report that's slightly different. Is, um, we had an inordinate number of calls this month that were scheduled. Uh, people will call dispatch and say, hey, I need an ambulance at one to help with my grandfather or grandmother, or whatever the case may be, and that drove up our shoot time just a hair. So if you notice our shoot times a little longer, that's where that's coming from, but. It's nominal, we went up. Twenty thirty seconds, maybe, so, then, if you notice that, that's the only thing that was kinda out of the norm. We'd probably do four or five of those calls a month, and I think last month we might have done ten.
These are based on transports?
Uh, we do a lot of. Public service, public relation calls, where. Um, call it kinda like preventative medicine, if somebody is getting to the car, coming home from the hospital, we'll go down and take them into the house or the, out of the house, so it reduces the fall risk. And then we don't end up with an emergency call later, so we just had a few more of those than we normally do. And where they'll call dispatch at say noon, and then say, oh, we'd like an ambulance to meet us at one to bring our mother home, that drives up our shoot time a little bit, so. Cuz it looks like we took an hour to respond. When the reality is it's scheduled, so.
Awesome.
I mean, it's very nominal, I don't know if you'd even noticed across a year, it really, it really doesn't have a big effect.
But you notice it.
Oh, I do, yes, I do, I go back and look exactly where those times move, and, and I, I generally got an answer as to why, so.
Can you exclude, uh, shoot time for non-emergent calls?
We could. It's, it's not really a lot of work, I would just have to do it manually, cuz our software doesn't do that, the times are kind of. Built for emergency service. No, no, and it's really not, and I actually do separate those times out, so I know where, where the change is for my own benefit. Uh, but now the software is really not compatible for that, cuz it's designed for emergency services and. You know, we do a lot of non-emergent type things, public relations things, non-emergent transfers and that type of thing, so. It probably bothers me more than it bothers anybody else in the whole world, so. The crews do a great job and. Those times stay pretty standard, so.
Thanks, awesome. Do I have a motion to file EMS mission report from February twenty twenty three?
Sure.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Good.
Passes three to zero. Thank you.
Alright. Have a good day.
You too. I only counselor.
Um, during the past couple of weeks, we've worked on two grants with outside. Applicants, I guess, the, the Abbey and the Embrywell. Um, both of those grants and as well as. Most grants, I think, also have a provision and they're asking, how many grants are we administering? And I don't know the exact answer to that, that was one of the things that the. Financial director was going to track, keep track of, and. Um. I actually did have, uh, an email discussion with him, which was, was really pretty good, but. Uh, he made me aware of, of one grant that. He knew that we had, that was that the sheriff has. Um. But we may want to consider having something in place. Where those grants all come. At least notification to. The. The county as a whole or to the board. Um, you know, elected officials maybe. Aren't required to ask your permission to do it, but. We could run into some problems if we're. Uh. If we apply for a grant and we say that we're not using any other funds, or we haven't applied for. The grant from such and such. Um, if we actually have, we might be violating the terms of the grant, it may be ineligible and. Um, could ultimately lead to having to take back. The amount of a grant, so. Um, I don't know, um. I don't have a. A solution, a, a great idea about it, but I thought we should have some discussion about how to deal with that situation.
Um. And this might be a Michelle question, is that something that would fall under the clerk, that you could have a, like a running? List of all grants and everything, and not necessarily administer them, but just be. Aware of.
Realistically with the audit, it is something that we should have anyway, so I mean, our auditor, the auditor and the clerk, we basically have to give them information on all the grants that we, we have and. Throughout the county.
Yeah, that does make sense, I mean, I wasn't even thinking from the audit standpoint, but it just seems like that would be the logical place to have. A notification that. And then there was ever anything in these meetings, you know, if you wanna administer another grant, well, what do we have, and you'd have a list, boom, of. Of that. Wouldn't, would all. Would they require? I mean, for. But most of these things like total grant, which, how much it's for, or when it's payable, or. Terms, I, how, how much information would need to be with?
Well, as far as the application goes, when we're filling out an application, it's usually they're just asking for some. Numbers, how many grants are you administering and that sort of thing. Um. Depending on. I'm not sure how, what way to say this, because as I, as I said, you, you probably can't force, uh. Elected officials, nor are you trying to, I'm just. Kind of talking through this, um. But we do need to take some reasonable steps to ensure that the grants are, the recording is being done as required by the grant, that the. Funds are being spent for the proper purposes, and. You know, it can't happen that somebody. Leaves a position and if they're the only one handling a grant, then maybe somebody else doesn't know what those reporting requirements are, the deadlines and stuff. So, i- it might be something a little more than just saying, hey. Michelle, can you start a, a list of grants, because.
Okay.
I, I think it might take a little more thought and, uh, attention. To see what the requirements are of the grant. Um. And to make sure that we're in compliance, because, and, and also if we're not in compliance, or if we fall out of compliance, that may. Affect our ability to get any other grants, at least from that grant tour. If they, yeah, it's in county really messed up. That grant we gave them. Five years ago, they may not wanna. Do another grant here. Um. So I, I don't know, um. I don't know what other counties do with anything.
Maybe we should find that out first.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, rather reinvent the wheel, I mean. Michelle, how many grants do you think, the auditor's already done some of those things, so we have an idea, I'm assuming some K dot stuff in there, there could be. Through law enforcement, there's all kinds of.
They have the cops grant, which is the one that was in question. And that basically is for like resource officer, school resource officer. Um, and they pay a certain percentage of the wages for that, um, a lot of the K dot. Grants and the, you know, like the H, H triple R that he was talking about, the off-season bridge, some of those would be grants from federal and or state level. Um, we get the EMPG grant. Which is in just being emergency management, I just put them. Saying, sorry. So that's grant money every year, um. Need any correction? It's based, based on, off of a grant. But other than that.
So project concern gets. Grant money to you, does that come through us? Okay.
I know, thanks, and we give them appropriations, and we do write letters. Um, of support yearly for them to, and I think Stephanie only, so is.
But what about the things like Benedictine College, when they are getting? Grants and we are signed. Off on some of those.
That's bonding, that's bonding.
Yeah, I don't recall any grants.
Grants, okay, now, I'm, I got that confused. With that. Um.
So are, are we supposed to keep track of them annually? Then, how many, cuz the question was how many grants are we administering? Like annually, cuz since I've been here, the C D V G, we got the Mokian, uh, grant for the roof, um. Like, I don't know.
Several, I mean, yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or if it's more about sponsoring a nonprofit's grant, like, like what these other ones were.
And, and I think, I think it's maybe not a. A matter of the list of what grants is how they're funded, if it's federal money, state money. How they're funded. If it's federal money, state money. That type of thing, I think, is what's most important. Am I correct with that?
Uh yeah, I think so. Um I hadn't thought of it until you mentioned the audit process and looked at the audit from last year and there's. There's a Kansas Department of Wildlife Wildlife and Parks grant of less than two thousand dollars and there's a. EMPG grant. Emergency medical something. Of twenty-one thousand eight hundred nine, so.
For the heart monitors? I thought Corey did one on the heart, maybe not.
I know we got many um out of house steps or.
Something from like historical. It's a gift.
For the roof, their Moken, is that the one?
I was thinking windows, but maybe it was the. It seemed like there was.
Trevor Tuck.
Yeah, that's probably. Michelle, can you ask down here, let's serve maybe Vanessa, the kind of clerks out there. Manage against and ask, make sure we're doing it right. Or whatever, so. I also like to know what's the managing number that, oh, you have.
I know.
Seventy-five grants you can't manage anymore. That way, how's that work, you know?
I don't think it's that. I think if we're over a hundred thousand dollars in federal funds, we have to do the. The uh single audit. Um uh I'm not aware. Just any numerical number of grants or dollar amount limitation.
What about the dollar amount where it's coming from?
Yeah. And making sure that we comply with the terms of the. The the grant itself, each grant.
Does the auditor look at that? Um closer as far as if we're complying with the terms of the grant?
I don't know that that they look at that, but I do know that we have had the single audit. Prior, we have they they check on that as well. When we need that single audit.
Yeah, there there isn't uh anything significant in the. The letters from. From the auditor that I see.
With reporting requirements with the grants, because they talked about it didn't pay for the cost of reporting and all that. So that's how it's done.
Yeah, I don't see anything in that. There's nothing in. The letters. At least for the last, in the audit letter from the. But we are, there's nothing in there. There's a very small snippet within the financial statements. But it just generally says that we get some grants and they don't materially affect. The finances of the county. So I'll put a question on the county counselors, let's serve the CD. How the counties are handling. Next week we have the uh. Bit opening on the uh abstracting for. Protects sake. Tax sale season is about to begin.
As a great treasure, being able to get. She's still working.
She she has, we uh. I I gave her a list and she uh she pared them down. There, take out the ones that. We we have some that I think are software driven or it's not uh. Maybe what's in the software isn't completely accurate. Because we had a few properties, for example, I have one year taxes of from two thousand seven and nothing else. And so we're, you know, we're looking at looking into those, but we're not going to put them on the tax sale.
Verpa is correct.
And then according to a few that. That had been through the tax sale process, even whether they sold or didn't sell. But are still showing on there because we haven't finalized the. The disbursement of funds.
And then with the ones that haven't sold over the past two sales, have we started the process to put those in? Our name so we can publish those.
Be included in the same order that I was talking about with the distribution of funds.
Well, so get a chat out there that if we're over eight hundred thousand in federal funds, we have to complete the simple lot.
I was wrong. If that's the threshold, I thought it was a hundred, but.
That's part of it. Is that very based on the size of the county, I wonder?
I don't think so. I think it's part of patchy. Okay, it's most likely. There's probably a missed likely.
Well, a hundred to eight hundreds are huge.
So the auditors is where I got that information from, because the only years we ever hit. The eight hundred thousand dollar mark is when we get FEMA money for disaster declarations. And of course, with the spark money and the. The ARPA money, that'll throw us into a single audit also.
Any additional? Um updates? Okay. If she's joining by Zoom, you think we can move her up from eleven thirty? Or should we just, we can, I mean, you guys have anything else you wanted to?
I don't. Know if we get over Mrs. I thought you may have policies or something.
Okay. Um okay, so I have. Three um. Like executive session, so attorney-client for fifteen minutes with the Pat. And Jody.
Starters fifteen minutes.
Michelle and the commissioners.
Fifteen minutes on attorney client?
Uh yes. And then twenty minutes personnel services.
Personal services.
Non-personnel, sorry, non-elected personnel, sorry. County counselor, commissioners, HR. Yeah, and um community corrections uh. Adult intensive supervision officer.
Kathy Crockett.
Yeah. And then uh twenty minutes commissioners and HR after that. Um yes, non-elected personnel and. Um can we add Michelle please to that twenty-minute non-elected with Kathy Crockett, please? County clerk as well. Awesome. So we can go ahead and do um attorney.
They all moved at the Board of County Commissioners recessing to executive session at eleven, eleven oh three.
Yeah.
Eleven oh three, the um consultation with an attorney to the public body, which would be would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three. One-nine B two, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion and that the board come out of executive session. At eleven twenty P M, uh A A M. In the commission room basement of the courthouse and those present will be uh Pat Henderson. Uh Jody from HR, Michelle, Clark, and the three commissioners. Second.
Thanks. Then move to second and all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in regular session and gonna head back into an executive session for uh non-elected personnel.
Okay, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessing to executive session. At eleven twenty A M to to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash. Four-three-one-nine-B-one, and that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and the board come out of executive session. At as I reported, eleven forty. A M in the commission room basement of the courthouse and those present will be the three commissioners. Jody Moore, HR, Pat Henderson, counsel, county counselor, the county clerk, Michelle Phillips. And Kathy Crockett from Community Corrections. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is three to zero. We will head into executive session. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, we are back in regular session um and. Uh we currently have a vacancy um. As the Director of Community Corrections, so I would like to make a motion um to make Kathy Crockett. Our interim Director of Community Corrections um immediately and increase. Her pay to thirty-four dollars and forty-nine cents per hour, starting the beginning of the current pay period. Do I have? And ending um once a new director is hired.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do I, all of those in favor say aye? Okay, passes three to zero. And thank you, Kathy, for um assuming this role and. While we find, start the process for a new director. Okay, um one more. Um non-elected commissioners and HR twenty minutes.
Okay, I'll I will move that the Board of County Commissioners recessing to executive session at. Eleven forty-three. P A M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of executive session. In twenty minutes, which would be um well. Four-three. So right, twelve oh three. P M in the commission room basement of the courthouse and those present will be uh the three commissioners and HR, the director, Jody.
Okay, I'll second. Been moved in second with all those in favor, you're. Passes three to zero. Yeah, it's just like.
Okay, I think that we want to extend, I'll make a motion to extend. We're to keep going. We're uh to extend the uh previous uh executive session by ten minutes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, so um it is now twelve vocal words, so twelve fourteen, twelve fifteen, can you just do twelve?
I'm gonna get my P M's, A M, P M's.
Okay, we are out of executive session and I have one more addition to the agenda. Um I have a purchase order. Um from I T um suggesting um strong body shop. To replace bedside tailgate bumper paint to match a two thousand thirteen Chevy Silverado twenty-five hundred rescue truck. Um in the amount of three thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents. And this will be reimbursed reimbursed from um an insurance uh claim. I have a motion to approve.
So move.
It's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Okay, you wanted to talk about policies, you said.
Yeah, I thought. Not so much personnel stuff, the other policies that we have in that book. Maybe get some direction on. Start where the chairwoman. I'm more to create more questions and answers.
Well, yeah, um is there a specific area that you were?
Well, I thought on the table of contents. Training down. There's two or three things that might belong in personnel, but most of these are not personnel issues or. As far as personnel policy manual, so I thought whether it's training stuff, travel, whatever category you want to talk about.
So starting on night nineteen.
You see, can I interrupt you just one moment? That, you know, was actually for emergency management, not. Uh I just wanted to correct that.
Did it say that?
That's my comment on the camera. Um it does say it's kind of from I T, so.
The P O is wrong, but I wanted to clarify. I forgot to change it to emergency management.
Okay, um do we need to? Amend that motion at all, Mr. Anderson?
Uh yeah, you probably.
Okay.
Probably should if you if the motion stated that it was.
Yep. Yeah, okay, so um I'm gonna restate um a previous uh purchase order um from. What I said was I T, but it's actually emergency management um to suggest a strong body shop. For the three thousand and six hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Do I have a motion to amend?
So move.
So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. And we amend that. Thank you.
So training, I remember I had to read through this one. Nothing jumped on me in that one um because she has to read through some of these.
Yeah, and um.
For example, I'm true that out of state travel. For example, I'm true that out of state travel, um is that really necessary?
Of what?
But but Cory did have to approve that, I mean, it seems like if it's in their budget and they have the authority to author as a certain amount of that travelers.
I think your sense is out of state is the only thing that.
It's on here with that. It's approval of the Department head and city and county has to prove it. From page twenty one. He just wanted to reassure us. You know, that's happened so rarely, it doesn't bother me to leave that hand. Well, the way it stayed there, he didn't have to come to us anyway, this is the Department head.
Yeah.
In my time here, it's only been Cory that.
Yeah, he's had, you know, a couple, uh, I think that. It's comfortable, so then it's fine. I think, and another time it wasn't training, but it was like to go drive a am new ambulance, you know, to. Pick it up and bring it in, maybe it was Illinois or somewhere where we had to go get it, or things like that.
This was my. It seems pretty in-depth for training, like, to me, training and education are great, like. At the Department head's discretion, kind of, um and then as far as Department heads at our discretion um during budget time. I mean, because this goes into.
This first business travel, page twenty at the bottom, so kind of, kind of blurs together.
Right.
Kind of sneaks in you. It's a travel policy, it's the next, I kind of blurred those together. Ready to travel um. Have there been any problems with any of the training and uh processes in the last few years as a company's new?
I haven't, I don't recall any.
Then it must be working. My, my bigger question is we get to the next one, they're disciplinary procedures, I mean, that should be the personnel. Aspect, to me, to me, there's personality issues sprinkled in amongst these sort of policies. Now, like, Julie's input on. That one and harassment uh. Policies as far as. If she's encountered or he changes in the law that might affect some of those things.
I suspect that a lot of the section like under harassment is probably. Needs to be there to comply with. Regulations and, you know, where it could seem like, boy, that's a long chapter for that, well, but you needed to cover. Yeah, everything needs to be there.
Yeah. At the top, point seven, those are all related to. Everybody has breaks of harassment policies and. Reporting and all that. We have had, take a fresh look at those as well. You have a chance to review those at home. All they're.
Well, we, we started to go through them, but we hadn't gotten to those, so.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, you're right, there are quite a few of these that are not personnel. Strictly.
I mean, yes, like the concept of separating everything into one personnel manual and one policy manual. Okay, just to, is it a kind of muddled together?
And I would love if we could get an electronic version somehow, where, where you can go and click on a link.
Yeah.
Whether it's on the shared driver or wherever and. And drill down to what you're looking for. I've just used that in other counties and it was helpful.
And then moving forward, like concealed carry. Where are you at? I'm on twenty seven now, I just said concealed carries, that'd be uh, so is that a personnel policy or is that a policy for the county, or is it both? Sometimes there's a different policy for personnel versus public buildings. So I just wanted to figure that out. This reads more like it's just a general policy for the county.
That, it's thirty seven, it's no true.
Twenty seven. There may have been additional changes to the law and then I have no idea.
There were some.
It says new violations down here, but. There's no date. I'm seeing. This is a big ticket, quite a few times over here much lately.
Yeah.
Page twenty eight, we gotta get rid of the tattoos, shouldn't, well, I guess it says should not be visible, but I still think that that's.
Get rid of tattoo.
Well, I just. I think we should take it out, we have so many staff members with tattoos that can't be covered when they're wearing cert, I mean. Unless we.
I see page eight.
It's, yeah, twenty nine D, it starts on twenty eight, personal appearance and employees, but it's.
I need the whole fresh look, really.
Yeah, I just remember that's the one we keep going back to, it's like, okay, that needs to be taken out of it.
I had to change it my office a couple of times, cause just cause things changed.
Whatever. And actually, beards, we should, well, I guess neatly trimmed, I mean, seriously, though. We have people that have beers and it's not really that big of a mustache.
It's better not be, are you volunteering, you will be the beer police?
No, I'm saying it shouldn't be in here, like, kind of like tattoos, like, it's not really that big of a deal. I mean. Right. I would take C Andy out.
I'm sure Judy has nothing to do, we could have her give a recommendation on that. It does, it does seem like, and it's nothing against any of our employees, but it seems like you have to almost have a little bit of a, little bit of address code because. Things do get a little out of control.
That kind of obfuscates a little bit, it says it's the employee's responsibility to comply with the specific departmental dress regulations, well. Are they there? You know, it's almost like we would need to ensure that there is. Something at each department that would direct that.
Where do you see that? Uh, twenty nine uh. Top um. Second bullet point. Certain employees may be required to want specific dress grooming and hygiene standards. Last part of that sentence. But since it's there and then down below it mentions Sheriff's Office of Searville specifically, doesn't mention the M S or. Yeah, I think it needs to be cleaned up, yeah.
Well, and we should take. We should probably take Sheriff's Office out of this, cause that's not.
Well, that's the point, to say it's the, they have their own.
Yeah. I don't think we should.
Roger. Y'all finish up. Yeah, being boring now. Do you even pee like move something?
No, not, not necessarily, I mean, if nothing is really important, I'll just tell you, you may get a phone call from someone who. Uh, wants to change their address.
Okay, and we are on camera, just so you know.
No, no, I.
I, I want to warn you that.
I've told her she can write, write me a letter and I will bring it to you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if you want to change your address from what it currently is to. A and B for the two houses that are on, if they have separate numerical addresses, we issued her a permit in two thousand fourteen. Um, you know, we issued one of the addresses new in two thousand fourteen. And for some reason, she says she came to the county five years ago and uh. Uh, that no one knew what was going on. And so. I inquired where she came in the courthouse and she said to the Accra's office and I said, well, at that time I was located there, so. I don't think that would have been the case, but we have reached a, an impasse, so she was, said she went to the post office and they told her she could do whatever she wanted, so. Uh, you may hear from her, if you do know that we're not. And. We're not, and, and I understand, I'm, I'm, I'm just taking everything as though. It was emotional.
Just a question, so. We issue addresses.
We do.
So, does the post office understand it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not suggesting the post office really did.
Okay, I'm just, just asking, cause I'm like, hmm, that's.
They're usually really good at that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And there's set of standards and protocols for how addresses are.
Yeah, so if I do get a letter requesting it, I may bring it to you so that you all can either weigh in and change it if you want or not change it.
But we've never had an address A B before, correct?
We, we have them within the city of Ashson. Um, now, we let the city issue all uh. Any of the cities, incorporated city good in our county that want to issue their own addresses are welcome to do so. Uh, the city of Ashson issues theirs. Uh, we issue them for most of the other cities, every once in a while, Pepinham will issue one. Uh, but, the most part, we issue them all. In the city of Ashson, um as an example, uh you may have a number of properties where you've got a multi-family group. Uh, Laramie Garden Apartments, for instance, uh they've got. Four buildings and the buildings have separate addresses, but all the units in the building are A, B, C, and D. And so you'll, you'll have those situations. Uh, I can tell you until about five years ago, all addresses, uh you only got one address per property because that's all the database we hold. Uh, now Orion allows you to put multiple properties, property addresses in, so you have a number of them. Uh, that, as an example, the entire uh the property the Abby bought from the school. It used to be Burt Nash, it only had one address on it until they just recently divided out, paid chunk for Valley Hope. So, you, you can have both situations, but in the county, we don't have A's and Bs. I don't know of a case in. Not suggesting to be heavily on Hitler, I'm just in here and somebody said, if you wanna say something, so. We get a lot of phone calls. And we answer and we move on. And everyone, why would you reach in and ask?
Whose district is this person in?
Your.
Mine, yeah, well, that, I wouldn't mind. More likely to, I'll get, be prepared. Okay.
Nope, I have nothing. I just didn't know if you were still on and you're still going till one o'clock.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we were just going through the policy book.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I just heard policies, so I came down this.
So, um. Question for you.
Just making notes and scratching, I'll hand this off to you. Sounds great.
So, we're just about splitting out some things that aren't with personnel and going into database that way, so on the um. Where's the harassment part here, picture later, so. We wanted to make sure that's all current, you know, it's kind of like. It's those things have changed a little bit, so. Mentioned to Pat, if you want to take a look at those, there's any changes to make to that area, it's probably fine. The other was the disciplinary procedure. Uh, that probably has been the personnel side, that might just kind of double check that with H R kind of rules and things and see if it's. Still. Have a full pronoun, right?
Yeah, and also, I'm kind of marking through here, but we have like elected op, elected officials specifically named in here, so we should probably just. Take them out.
Where do you see that?
Um, which I'm making note and I'll need to do this.
What was the tattoo policy?
Yeah, well. Still, I don't think it's probably good to have Sheriff's Office name on it, policy book.
Historically, the sheriff at the time, this, the one who wrote this or was.
Oh, that's why it's notated.
So he singled, he singled himself out, it wasn't the Commissioners.
And, okay, and the admin of nursing home.
Right.
Those were the two.
That's why they put themselves in here, okay, perfect. Yes, I'm like, that seems bizarre, but whatever.
A lot that needs to be updated um since becoming H R, that's been one of the big tasks, yeah. It's a fool.
Well, and so much of it's like really in depth, but I'm like, does it need to be, and then on the flip side, it's like. Less is more sometimes, but then, like, I'm thinking of other scenarios, like, that's been brought to me in the past. Time I've been here, like, I don't see that, like, it's, and maybe it is in here, but. Just like wearing your uniform to the bar or like all the things, like. Should that, you know?
To me, that would fall into the category of having departments have their own policies and procedures. You know, I wear my county T-shirt, but being able to go to Walmart in my county T-shirt, if we were to say that this wasn't to be worn out in public, that would be my uniform at that point, so I need to go home, change my county T-shirt into a regular town.
Right.
To go to Walmart. Or are we just going to exclude it from the bar scene, I feel like that should be departments.
So then, and then the departments give you a copy of it, so when someone calls you.
As of right now, you know that it's not required, um it's a commission, if I wanted to make that a requirement, I would make my life a lot easier as H R.
Okay, well, cause to me, it's just like the things that we get, right, it's like, hey, so-and-so's doing this, okay, okay, I'll let H R know, and then it's like. Well, I don't have any, like, this is what I'm going off of, so it's like, there's so many layers, if we can just.
Yep.
Consolidated to where HR's your one stop shop and you have the answer for them and it's. You know, I, I think that would be.
You probably know some departments that really don't have their. Their inter-office or their office policies, it's more of like, my, like, mine, I have, we can dress down and wear jeans on Fridays. It's kind of a given thing, but it's also a respect thing that you don't wear jeans that have holes. You know, so, I mean, do I have to have that written policy that when we have that dress down day that you don't wear jeans with holes? I mean, if somebody wears jeans with holes, I typically will say something to them and say. Think about it and, you know, and, and be respectful to them and say, nah, you know.
Yeah, but they may have paid three hundred dollars for that.
For the HR standpoint, um, I would have to disagree with a verbal policy versus written, you want that. You know, one of the expectations of me being your employee, can you tell me on paper before? I don't, you know, one day to the next, you may be different, you may be like, oh, I have too much to worry about today, go ahead and wear jeans with holes, next day you're like, that's probably not acceptable. So having it in written form.
Form, I'm sure.
Pro.
I think you have, it. You have to play like people aren't gonna understand a word of it, they have to read it. Because if you rely on somebody's fashion sense, we all know there's people that have none, so. And I don't mean that fashion to be dressed, but I mean, it's just like what's appropriate and what's not.
Right.
Because. No, uh, all the stuff you see at Walmart, I'm sorry to pick on it, but, you know, you'll see, uh, very inappropriate dress for public.
Yeah, I think that there should be a written policy, um, to set expectations of what's. What's expected of employees.
I find it interesting here, uh, maybe I'm missing something? We have a tobacco use policy? There's nothing to hear about alcohol and drug use.
Uh, there, there is somewhere in there.
It is in there, trying to find it where it is.
But I do believe we need to add to the tobacco, um, we have new things from two thousand nine, since the last time we actually had an update. Um, vaping is one, um, it's been a concern of, you know. I know my personal thoughts, I don't do either, but I'm not gonna go into Walmart and, and vape, um, should you be able to come into a public. Area or have vape pens. Available to you in a public county. Office.
They, they put some pretty interesting things in there too, so.
Yes, but we don't have a policy at this point, so brought HR, um. Not my policy on that.
I would recommend, uh, banning vaping, treating it like smoking.
Uh, I agree with that, as far as treating it like smoking. Um, however, our policy is on smoking, that that's the same, um, and with us owning the Memorial Hall, even though we don't run the. Is that the same county facility rules? The reason I'm asking is there's people that sit upstairs and vape during the games, and I think it's disgusting, but I'm not gonna. Yeah, but it's like, I don't know the rules down here to open my mouth, say, please don't do that next to my.
Thing that falls in a different, um, area than what you're looking at there, cause that is.
Personal facilities. But do we have facility?
Not to my.
Policies or?
Uh, it's still carry policy, so these, that's all that.
Yeah.
Well, the, the alcohol policy carries over not to serve alcohol unless there's a.
We have a resolution twenty sixteen dash fourteen twenty, there's a tobacco-free recreation facilities. So no, no tobacco, electronic cigarettes. At or on any county-owned or operated recreational facility, including without limitation, the Ashson County Lake, Ashson County Sports Complex and Memorial Hall.
I guess this is maybe, um, to counteract that, is vaping tobacco.
Those are electronic cigarettes. Like, I don't think cigarettes, that's, yes, it's in me. Should we send that resolution? Travis or somebody with the.
I know they blow out smoke like when they do it.
Sure we did that.
Because we had instances for you, uh, just that, that concerned someone missing vaping smoking as they were at their desk. And the next person was having, and that was an issue for several years over there.
I mean, it goes into some, some counties even have policies on perfume. Um, that they are not to wear heavy scented perfume because of people with headaches or.
Allergies, yes.
Some things affecting someone else, I can see that, like, if I'm wearing something and you're like, sitting over here choking, you're like, eh.
I have a lot of sensitivity issues, um. When I was downstairs here. There was a lady who, one certain person would come in and every single time he would come in, she would. Cough and cough and cough and cough and have to leave them. I mean, it was insane, it was, it was very obvious that she wasn't doing it. She was, she was really getting.
Another employee though?
No.
Oh, okay.
It was, it was a. This, somebody from.
Public.
That we, yeah, public that we dealt with quite often though.
Yeah.
But, but I mean, even we had so much candles, censy.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
I'm, I can't, I can't stand some of that stuff.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And essential oils now are big.
Yeah, and conversation, it made me, um, sound silly or like, how many times is that really gonna happen? But when it does happen, it's really nice for HR to have a policy to go back and follow. And keeps the expectation in order in place and like. I've been working. By myself really hard on going through and. Scratching things, adding things, and kind of other policies over other counties, um, haven't got extremely far, but I know training was our. Our, uh, point that we were trying to get to in the book, and so I'm gonna try to be there for, by the thirty-first. Um, one of the other counties that I absolutely love their book, um, is Lyon County. And I can send you, um, an email.
Agreed.
Um, I don't know if you guys are opposed to just kind of completely taking a new book instead of dissecting ours, because it's just. It's a lot of work, first, one person to do, to dissect and then present it. Um, their book really, uh. Pinpoints. Employee policies, not so much, um, operation policies. And it pinpoints even, um, Gary County sent me a template they use for elected. Um, they sign off that they are in favor or not in favor of the policies. Um, so that there's a line of we accept, we don't accept, so HR and commission knows what is to be expected out of elected as well.
Yeah.
So, um, there's across the board, um, conversation with HR county, counties in HR, um, about how do we. Maintain and appoint an elective at that point.
That sounds very promising, yeah.
We serve up. So, I'll send you all of those.
Um, another, uh. Email I sent to Jody based on policies and personnel, um, of the onboarding and termination processes. Is I think it would be helpful, um, from just being witness to the past couple of years is having. Those responsibilities of like issuing key fobs, badges. Access of onboarding and termination process to be handled through her. Um, and the reason is because I've witnessed where we're like. Oh, well, what, like, if you issue them, you know what they have, and you're the one doing onboarding and you're the one involved in, um, when someone leaves. Um, you know what's out there and then you can do all the best steps to. Especially when it's not in the courthouse, cause we have so many facilities all over that it's not just here, so. She's traveling to all these sites and handling situations and, and just making it streamlined of, okay, I know Casey has this, this, and this, and I need to do this, this, and this, like. I just.
I think the only hiccup that you would have, um, with any of that, it would be the badges just goes online security. Um, and it falls under emergency management at that point, um, but. If we could streamline the others and then streamline a process, it's easier to maintain. The, making sure, you know, um, at this point, if somebody's terminated, if the department head doesn't get the badge and the fobs, I'm out trying to collect.
Yeah, so, well, and so what is that process if an employee doesn't give it back? Like, I don't know.
Request it. But department head wise, it kind of falls on the department head to retrieve for those items.
Oh, it's up to the department head?
As of right now, yes, so it's.
Yeah, so I think it would be better to have HR be that person. Just, and tell me if, if you think differently, but just from recent situations, um. HR was better. Avenue, I think, than going back to a department head.
Does that work for Senior Village as well?
It, um, does as of more now, um, just because I'm more involved, um, I take, I go there at least once a week, um, to kind of. Go around and see if anybody needs anything, collect what I need and follow up with whoever, um, but there's a lot of times I think that the process would have to be a bigger picture. Um, there's a lot of times where I don't know the termination has happened until I receive paperwork afterwards. So if that's going to change, um, the process needs to change as well to make it where I am included to know.
I think you need to be included.
Of those. It's up to you guys.
It could almost be like you were saying earlier that you, the department's heads would check off whether they are part of it. And then maybe that would be part B, because I can think of maybe a department or two that maybe. They would wanna continue doing those things, but as long as you knew, you knew, would know then. Automatically who you needed to follow up with and who not to.
Yeah, right now I have a checklist on terminations, um, if it's a resignation or a discharge, and when I'm collecting it and then. Finishing that last payroll that that person would be on, I have a checklist that I go down. If I don't know that their badge or bob was received, I call that department head and try to get that information, if I don't have that information, um, I state that on my paperwork.
Well, and. My opinion is department heads have a job to do and it's not chasing down ex-employees or things, like. To me, HR makes sense because more than likely, if it isn't a voluntary leave, um. That person doesn't necessarily wanna talk to that department head anyway, and just having HR collect and handle that piece would make.
Yeah.
Make it better.
So, are these departments, when they let someone go, are they always letting you know ahead of time and, or? Is it, I mean, I could also see a scenario where these people maybe are out the door. And the best chance of getting all of that is, you know, if you were new ahead of time and were there for the process. It's kind of like a download everything at once, but. You find out tomorrow that, and that person's already gone, how much more of a problem is that?
Um, to answer your question, it's a hit and miss between what, twelve to fourteen departments, um, some do, some don't. Let me know, um, there's been times where resignations have been submitted, but I don't know until that person has already had their last day. So then, when I'm completing that last payroll and doing the paperwork, that's when I'm following up with that department head on, did you retrieve this, this, and this, and this, and this? Um, then there's other times where I'm super included and I know when A, B, and C. Um, so it's a hit and miss, and I think that that's where I fall back on. This hand, employee handbook or having a operational handbook or supervisor or manager of this is what is to be expected. So that I know as HR that we have a process.
Do you have a checklist?
Yes.
Okay, the, the, the department heads, do they have that same checklist, so if. You're not available and something happens that they can go down and, cause some things they may not even think of, you know?
Um, no, they don't, my checklist is more in depth, the payroll, um, capers, insurance, it has everything on that.
Thinking about like.
But I could make a checklist for department.
That might be helpful because then, cause. I wouldn't, you know, when you're creating a checklist, and then as you think of something new, you can add to it, but then. When something happens and maybe it only happens once every couple of years, you're not thinking of checking out fobs and all the different things that could be. Collected.
I could easily make a checklist for him based off my checklist.
What's your preference?
On.
On how to handle it, having you handle it or department heads?
Cause well, I think there is a standard that department heads are responsible for. I don't want, I don't wanna take place of department heads with their employees' terminations, resignations, or new hires. Uh, but I think I could be of assistance to make the process easier and. Once they're terminated, discharged, or the resignation comes through, submit the resignation and let HR take care of the rest of it. Um, I agree. But I don't wanna take any responsibilities that should be a department head's responsibility at that point, cause they're in my department. I'm just to be of assistance to those departments. That's a fine line.
No, absolutely, but also like witnessing how you handle your department and your job and you are a resource for the department heads. And typically, when you're in those situations, Bob's collection isn't the top of your mind because you got so many other things, so having you as that. Person and professional that has a job to do, that's on your mind, you know, this is my process, that's HR, when we're going through this together, like.
Yep.
Of. I just think that it would need, it'd be a benefit for department heads to have a process that we implement with human part of it. Um. So.
I think it's gotten better since, um, the two years that I've been in HR, um, I think it has gotten better, but it, it has to be. Um, me putting myself in those situations and kind of. Taking the situation, I guess, um, so it would be easier if I had commissioned to give direction instead of me crying my way into those situations.
Explain that again, a little bit about on buying Academy, how they do the. So, so the, it's not the department heads that sign on, obviously elected, right, so.
Um, so Gary County is the one that has just a simple form that is given and that is, um, signed off and commissioning it. Signs off on it to recognize that they have accepted or not, um, and that is in their personnel files. Um, Lyon County within their employee handbook, it states that, um, in multiple areas that elected do not have to follow. Policies, but it's, do not have to follow, follow this policy, so it's after each one, um, to kind of state. Where, um, and then it gives another scenario that I really liked, um, my own personal opinion, but. It gives a, the employee, what is to be expected of chain of command. So in the department, you will have a supervisor or manager, um, then you will have department head. Then department head is to get with HR, you are not to get with one commissioner, one-on-one. Um, if you are unable to resolve it within HR and your department head, then it is not commission mobile. Um, that's one of the things that I've seen as HR that. We have employees not following chain of command with their supervisors, department heads, and then to HR. We should be of assistance before it drops on any of, any of your desks, so, um, and it shouldn't be just one, it should be all three at one time.
Yes, when it drops on the desk, it needs to be amongst all three.
So I really liked, um, their book because it pinpointed certain things that we were looking for. And that has been part of discussion and the layout of it, I really was a favorite as well, so.
That's Lyon County.
Yes. I just was online and going to each Kansas county and just kind of looking over certain books to see how.
I, I, I went through kind of our peer counties, but county size, I went each way about ten, it was just something like those, and I went to a lot of them where. Uh, it appeared like some of them had maybe employee login to go to that or something.
Yeah.
And then a, a lot of them have on there, only a few of them had something on there I could look at, so I got a little frustrated trying to find something, so.
Yeah.
I messed up with the Lyon County, so.
Yeah, Lyon County is, um, kind of like how ours is set up right now, you can just go to the HR department and that has the employee handbook listed. Um, others, it's been a very big topic, um, on HR listserv, so I gather all that information and save it to the compile, so. Um. It's, it's a struggle everywhere on their employee handbooks and they're constantly being updated, but there's never been in my, um. What I've been told, I guess, in the past, it's never been set that each year this policy handbook would be reviewed and changed. It was just as it came up and if, like a PTO policy, we changed from second vacation, that got updated. Um, but it was not updated online when I came in to HR, but it was in place. So, um, I think we just need a better process, like an annual, annual review, who's willing to review it? Um, in my personal opinion, it should be legal counsel, HR, and commission. Um. All policies being sent out. Uh, we have a way to speak to all of our employees through their work emails, where their direct deposits go. So that's the process I would like to have, is annual review with. Legal, myself.
Not during budget time, so maybe it's a winter time thing.
So there shouldn't be anything like this. So there shouldn't be anything like this. Once we get this under wraps, it should just be an organizational meeting of. Do we see anything that we need to change during this meeting for this book?
Well, I almost wondered if we could have like a, like a submission like throughout the year for winter. Uh, do it once a year, but then ideas could be dropped in, it's like we submit that this. Section here on page fifty-eight needs to be changed.
Yeah.
And then that way we have something to go to and look at, and then we could approve them all at once.
As you're facing that situation, you understand, oh, this should probably be tweaked. And then that way we can, I love that idea, then we can review them all.
Well, you probably have updates on your list so too.
Oh, yeah.
That because, just because we're not facing something, doesn't mean that another county's not facing something.
It could all be part of it, but it's kind of like getting a ticket on our, for uh. That Brian uses on his system, you know, we've got something, it's like, I think this section needs to be looked at, and then everybody have a chance to.
The HR lister has been a godsend, because you can't compare yourself as HR to to other com- companies because we're so unique with local government staff. And we're not, we're not an HR that's for Walmart or, you know, a simple company, it's a, it's very dynamic. Be with having all departments, um different regulation, regulations in each department.
On the performance review policy and kind of going to the time of year, do you know, are department heads doing their review policies? At a certain time cohesively or?
Um, so when I came into HR, uh I had department head meetings and I had requested for annual reviews and how. I thought they were a huge benefit, um but unfortunately not a lot do, um their annual reviews.
And that's.
So when I do see them come through, um they're early, like February, March, where they wait. Until after budget time, um right before cola is given for the new year, so. Beginning of the year or later in the year is when I see them.
Yeah, I don't really care when they do it, that should be an annual review though.
There should definitely be one.
It's even in our policy, so if they're not doing it, we need to. Figure out why.
Is that something that can be required of elected? It's curious.
Yeah, to my understanding, it was just anything that had to do with payroll. Um, and I guess you can make that part of payroll if during annuals they get raises, but if they're not getting any benefit as far as. A raise with that, can we really state that that's a?
I don't.
A payroll.
Well, the statute is pretty clear that you can. Um, that you can set per- that you do or have the ability to set a personnel policies for the county. And that elected officials are required to to follow them. But the rub comes with what if one doesn't, because there isn't really a mechanism for you to punish a elected official for ignoring. The policy, but um, you know, we we haven't really, I mean, we haven't had that kind of. Situation where you're at lottery heads with an elected official over. Something that statute formally, I mean, we haven't had it at all, but but especially over something that's. Statutorily clear and to be afforded to.
Yeah, okay, just curious.
Statutorily. The Board of County Commissioners. Have the authority to set county policy. And it must be followed by all elected officials?
Personnel policies.
Personnel policies.
Yeah, there's.
Because, sorry.
There's a separate statute for the sheriff, uh for the register of deeds, for the clerk and the treasurer. Yeah.
That supersede that or?
That that state that the board county, that they're subject to the. Board of County Commissioners' um personnel policies.
Isn't our policy meeting? It sounded like the only thing we have is budget.
Yeah.
Like, this is where it's like.
I think personnel policies and the wording during our policy meeting of HR policies. I connect those two. You remember when there was a discussion of, well, we follow HR policies, but then. As HR, I'm like, well, what would you consider HR policies? What appearance be HR policy? In my opinion, yes. But it came up in discussion of, you know, nose piercings or face piercings or tattoos or whatnot. Can they hire in their department with things that as a, as a county, we've already made a policy stating that. This is a do do not hire. Um, and it was told to me that, yes, I could, so. Then appearance is not an HR policy. So I think that's where the problem lies when it comes to our policies and our our dynamics with our departments.
Yeah.
The the statutes, they have basically the same language that. Um, they give the elected official the authority to appoint a deputy or to appoint other people in their office. To promote, demote, all of those good things. Um, and then any personnel action taken by the blank clerk, county clerk, sheriff, treasurer. Uh uh shall be subject to the following, one, personnel policies and procedures established by the Board of County Commissioners for all county employees. Other than elected officials. Two, any pay plan established by the Board of County Commissioners for all county employees other than elected officials. And three, any colle- applicable collective bargaining agreements or civil service system. And four, the budget for the financing of the operation of the bank, whichever office, as approved by the Board of County Commissioners.
With the statute.
Uh, this one's for the clerk, it's uh case nineteen dash three oh two. For the sheriff, it's nineteen dash eight oh five. Uh. For the treasurer, it's nineteen dash five oh three. For the register of deeds, it's nineteen twelve oh two.
As you read that, Pat, it, what I got out of that, and I think maybe you did too, was it sounded like the. Policy was not applicable to the. Elected official themselves, but the all of the people in the department are subject to it.
Yeah, I think that's right.
And I think that's where we were saying that everyone under them was not. It it, okay, is that what you got?
Yeah, so when he read it to me, I'm like, okay, wait, now I'm back to what we talked about in the policy meeting.
It's the individual themselves, the it's not applicable to. The elected official, but the people underneath, which would be county employees, would be the the policies would apply. And.
The electors hire and fire the elected officials, so they hire and fire the sheriff by casting votes. And so if you have a policy, if you wanna have a a no tattoo policy. That's not otherwise discriminatory in some way, you you may, but if the people elect. The sheriff with. But that's going to use, then you you couldn't enforce that.
Okay, but my my point was that the commission could enforce it on. The sheriff's department, we couldn't, we couldn't enforce it on the sheriff itself.
Yeah, that I think that's right. I mean, if you had a policy that said people can't wear shorts. But your sheriff decided he was going to wear shorts every day, what are you gonna do?
You can't do it, right?
You couldn't, but you, but you could, could mandate that for. Their employees if you wanted to, and I'm not suggesting you should.
Right, I'm I'm just saying that I'm trying to clarify in my mind and.
Yeah.
I mean, what is applicable and what's not?
To the other way.
Yeah.
That's where. HR's fine line is, that's where I was in the beginning, is I thought that's how. The process was supposed to be, and then during our policy meeting, maybe we're for that day, it was spoken that. It's theirs, it's Jody just turn around and go the opposite direction, just follow.
Yeah, that we're we're creating this for a resource for them. But not necessarily that you have to follow it. Is that how you took it, that meeting? I mean, you were here and.
For you, for you or your people, that's how I took that conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think it sounds more like after that, that it's. It's just the individual themselves, the elected official. I can't think of it this way.
I that's, that's how I read it, but I would like to see um, you know, feedback, especially from Sheriff Laurie's on. That, you know, how do elected see it as well, because there is confusion within the process. And it's a big part of my day to day. So I love to.
I actually see how Lion County does it, because maybe they've addressed that a little bit, but they're.
It's worded a certain way in there, um that it falls onto departments, but they do not, in my opinion and how I read it. Um, they take it by department, not elected unwanted. Um, so when it comes to employees, it's by department, so if they have department policies or procedures, that can be. Over what the actual, if approved. By, so say EMS wants to say, I'm okay with base tattoos, so to speak, and. They come to you and say, hey, I'm putting this policy into place because I'm losing people, I need people, and I'm gonna put this policy, and you guys will say, okay, then. That's okay for them to go by policy first policy.
But they have to have a written policy to supersede the ones we have.
That's how I.
I kind of like that, because then that way it incentivizes each department to have their own, uh, cause I don't know if. They've got them or not, I mean, if the policies. And if they would write up these policies and then it would, then we would have to approve them. Then we would be handing them. And out, but at least that would make them create. Policies or keep them updated.
Each department's gonna have different needs and different things that work. Were their process and operation. In my personal opinion of being HR, if it's gonna help process and operation. Let's do it to benefit that department. However, we have to be consistent and stay. We're all county employees, um elected are elected, but county employees are county employees in in my personal opinion.
Well, and I agree, but that's the consistency part was hard for me because. I'm being, like originally I was told that we're creating these policies for all county. Elected and appointed, and so we're going through and doing that, and then elected telling me, no, you're not. Because and and we had that meeting and elected officials believe that the only thing we, you guys are here, is budget, that's all, I mean. We all had that conversation, and so then it's like, okay, well, now we all can take a deep breath and know what lane we're staying in. We're gonna create this for the county and you can use it as a resource or not. And so that felt good that we walked away, but now it seems like.
It's clear as mud, have you heard that before?
I know, but but now it.
Rockets were one of my, we are.
But you can think about it, a lot of departments, like let's say the uh personal appearance or uh. Always a, our, things like that are pretty consistent amongst most things, that the sheriff's gonna be different, they wear uniforms. We're not requiring uniforms for their, all the county employees, he's gonna require a uniform, there's there's obviously some differences in certain departments. You know, so, I mean, I I think, with the reason, I think everybody's gonna understand that, so.
I think one thing that I was confused um and left confused on our policy meeting was um disciplinary was at, there was a question asked about disciplinary. And um if something happens in a different department, um and there is something right up. Or it's against a policy of some sort, um does HR have the right to be involved? A no, um and. There was a no, there was, no, I would take care of that. Well, are you gonna send that paperwork so that that goes in that personnel file? No, we have our own, um which. I'm willing to work with whatever we got, just to make it better, but that's where HR is confused on where, what is our. What's our reasoning and what's what's our reason to be involved? Should I push more to be involved in those things? Is that my. Round of work that I should be gaining that disciplinary form to put into my personnel file. If there's an HR app audit, would that be something that I would need?
Well, what if, so, okay, let's just say, uh, if some some department doesn't want to give you that. And then a potential employer calls and asks for a reference or a job history on whoever it is. Do you just tell them you need to call? Whether it's whatever the department head it is or?
I haven't had that happen, but that's what I would have to do, um because I wouldn't have any information. Uh, there's a lot of times where I will get a termination and it is a discharge, um and there would be no, no reason given. So that falls into a lot of things, um unemployment.
Means how you fill it out if you don't have the information?
I fish for it and maybe get some information from those department heads, but sometimes not.
So it's a liability for us.
Absolutely, and that's where the conversation came into play with the policy committee on. You know, who's liable at that point, and I believe that was my exact words of who's liable. Well, that that would fall back on our elected to be liable, and like, so that would have nothing to do with me as the county, in the end, it would. I would be liable, because who's gonna be going to employment court with Pat and answering questions?
It almost reminds me of that. Murder when, last year you had me sign as chairman, the uh. Employee, yeah, those. Because then it's you gotta sign off, the chain of command or something else, it's not you signing for. It's almost like you would need an employee that you were collecting nothing on, you would need a signature from the department head saying. I'm taking responsibility for this, this and this, and it's not. Incumbent upon the HR director to. You know, to do this, because they're taking a person's responsibility.
But to switch, but to switch that for what you just said, to switch it, I'm HR for a reason, and there's a, there's a, there's a reason behind. Having HR as a a service, so just providing that information so that I can do the duties that's left. If they pop up with unemployment or court or anything, I'm able to finish my job at that point because I was getting information.
Sure.
To finish it.
Yeah, I mean, I personally, I'd like to see you have it all, I mean, all of that be at, at least be. Brought into it and sent the same information.
So I, maybe the disconnect in reading the statute then is. When you read it, personnel policies and procedures established by the Board of County Commissioners for all county employees other than elected officials. And in an elected officialized, they think department, like their whole department versus just them as a person.
Yeah, I think it's.
But regardless, what the right answer is, we need to be cohesive in understanding that, cause just at that last meeting, it's like. There is a line and we need to know what that line is, so, cause for me of consistency, again, going. Pre our last policy meeting of getting clarity, I was holding everyone consistent, like asking the same questions and. And addressing everything the same. But if I don't have authority to do, don't wanna do that, because I don't wanna. Look like.
That's where I'm putting, I'm kind of.
And for you, we don't.
Faith into you guys, a process, I'm willing to do whatever direction you guys give. Um, but knowing that direction, because it's kind of just hit and miss or, you know, being. Somewhat new of two years in HR, I get, well, we've always done it this way, or this is how it's been done, or. I know that I do it differently than your other twelve departments, but this is the way we do it. Well, I'm juggling on the phone when I answer the phone to think. Okay, so this is talking the road and bridge, so I'm gonna do it this way. Um, there needs to be a better process.
I agree.
And. That into play, but I'm not the one to put that in.
Possibility of like an HR audit, now what, who would do that and what's that consist of? I mean, uh, don't.
I haven't had one happen, um so I don't know a lot of information, but I do know that it's a possibility to to have it happen.
Would there be, well, I was thinking, was that be some kind of resource of like, what uh what is accounting audited on? Uh, you know, and then. You're, you know, kind of come in the back way of saying, you know, what what is expected? Of an HR department, what if that a county that doesn't have an HR department? I mean, what? I mean, well, how do that, is that fall back on each department head then for their?
I know they have certain regulations where they have to have their own personnel, um. So we say, you know, HR gets originals, you guys get copies, um, it doesn't happen all the time, um but. During our regular audit every year, I get audited just on payroll, um, so the money's coming in and and out. But as far as personnel policy, I know that there are HR audits for personnel. Um, I don't know if that arises, Pat, you may be able to answer the question, if that arises from like in a. A court gazer, a questioning.
Is your, the audit that you were talking about payroll, is that done by carrot to make sure we're paying appropriate premiums on work comp or who is it done by?
So we have a work comp one, I don't believe they call it an audit, it's like a review, an annual review, so I do have to give information. But um who's our auditor?
Oh, it's on, actually by the, it's part of the.
Yes.
County audit.
Yeah, I have to provide information every year for that as well.
Right.
The work comp thing, they do that with everybody.
Yeah, that's just kind of a review.
Yeah, you need to charge more money.
But better understanding these processes and who's liable, um. Because again, my understanding of elected officials was really. Because again, my understanding of elected officials was really that's. Our, our, off our grid.
And their whole department.
Yes, so when we get, I, phone calls about other elected officials, I've always said. Call that elected official, just like I tell them to call the department head, right, that's step one, that's like, we don't have authority over elected officials, like. Was my understanding, um. But if that's not the case. We need to do a better job, I guess, of holding our electeds. Accountable just as well, because. An audit, which we've looked at historic audits and things that are on there. Does that reflect, that reflects us three, not necessarily that elected official department, right? So I'm gonna use you for an example, so if Michelle doesn't prepare an agenda, or, and this is just like a hypothetical, she doesn't do a piece of her job. And the auditor flags it, then. Are we li, like, who is?
Well, you're, in that situation, your management, you're responsible for how the entity operates. And to, you know, you said who, who's liable, well, I, I can tell you, if somebody was fired improperly, um. You know, and sexual harassment, someone with a sexual harassment claim, for example, even though it might be an elected official that actually did the firing. The, the board of county commissioners is the one that's going to be sued. And will be included, and so. Um, under the tort claims act, there's also a requirement that as long as the. Person was acting within the scope of their duties, you're liable to pay a, a judgment that's entered, so. I, I think maybe the inquiry is who's responsible, not necessarily liable, because. You're going to be liable for employment decisions that are not yours to make. Um, you're not personally liable, but it's the county that's liable, and you control the county's. Um, per strength, so. Um, that may seem unfair, but you don't have, uh, you don't have the authority to go to. That, an elected official, and, you know, if you ask him questions, they don't really have to answer them.
Right.
You have a disagreement about, I think you're treating that employee. Poorly, or that employee has a disability and they're ignoring it or something, that, um. They're still going to be making the decisions about what to do, and your, you as the board are likely to be liable. For violations. But.
So having more probably one-on-ones with them too, just for us, would be, would be definitely helpful, I feel like, for.
Probably.
The seats we sit in, just to make sure we have.
I think that's, um, I don't know if you're, you guys remember during the policy meeting, that's one of the scenarios that I used was. You know, an employee comes to HR and complains about another employee touching another employee. I bring that to department head's attention, that department head is an elected official. That department head does not follow up or does, I don't know, because HR then is supposed to turn away and. Go back to their desk. Um. Two months down the road. That employee that. We were acknowledged that something was wrong, aggressive, touching whatever. Something happens physically to another person because of that person, who's liable?
Well, as I said, the board of county commissioners is going to get sued, but you're not was. You're not responsible for creating the tort or committing the tort, but. That's gonna be the person who actually did it. But, I mean, you could have the same situation where you have, uh, just an employee that's harassing another employee. And the department head doesn't do anything about it, it's. Not even the department head there that's the wrong at, doing the wrong thing, but. Still, it's the board of county commissioners that could be held responsible for it. Could be held liable for it.
Yes. And in HR standpoint, if something was brought to me, just like how, you know, things are brought to commission. And you feel like I need to address them, I need to take care of them. I need to take care of it, and just telling that, uh, putting off faith that that department head, elected or appointed. Is gonna take care of it, is, it doesn't set well with me as a person, and it doesn't set well with me as an HR professional, I just don't. I'm gonna follow up. I'm gonna make sure it's taken care of. If it's not taken care of, it's still gonna be in my mind, but this is a possibility that might arise two months down the road and. Physically or mentally hurt one of. Our employees.
Do you document those when you disclose? To a department head that they need to take care of something? So, I mean.
Um, yes, um, to a certain extent, depends on what it is really. If it's something that's, uh, not offensive, what I'm talking, yes. If it's smaller, you said she said this, and she's not happy with that. I can, but I would be documenting all the time. That was one of my concerns when I brought it up, and now I'm confused even more than.
Just clear as mud. It's alright, it's just, it just kinda seems like it revolves, keeps coming.
It's all written by lawyers, it's on purpose.
It's a plot, yeah.
Well, one way or another, we have to figure it out together, so that we can all work together and have. Department heads being able to do their job.
Patrick, are you gonna be available on the thirty first for our policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would look into that, I mean, I mean, all, all of us look into the aspect of, you know, if it's just department heads. That, or, that affects, or their whole department. I'm, I'm reading those statutes. I'm not a lawyer, but it's pretty clear.
Well, and that's why I feel like it's important to bring, like, to invite the elected officials back. For a follow-up, because that was my goal the first time, is to walk away with an understanding of what. Lane I'm supposed to stay in, based on what I'm being told and what statutes are being thrown at me, and. Again.
And you can have a statute, you can have the rule of the law, so to speak. But what I've seen through HR listserv is, your county commission will be the ones to kind of say, it's, it's. Kind of like with joint communications, you guys can follow, or not joint, community corrections, you guys can follow that wage scale. But you don't have to, but you try to, or you'd work with, uh, the elected, so I think in a lot of scenarios that I've read about. The county, it lays in the county commission if they're going to.
Enforce it.
To the depth, or if they're gonna kind of work with them, but there's been no direction given from. This area, not, no offense to any of you, but there's been no direction given from this area on that process, that it's just been. HR and. Departments and like trying to do this and do that, and. That's where. I think has caused a great, a great fight with them.
Well, and that's why I feel like having those in-person, look you in the eye, like, what? I'm allowed, what I'm not allowed, so that we all are on the same team and on the same page, and then sign it, and then sign it. And then put it in writing, and then I won't overstep mine, but I'll also hold everybody accountable the same, like. It's.
So I don't think there's a, this is the way it should be done, this is the way it shouldn't be, I think that there's a, we recommend it be done this way. And county commissions throughout Kansas have just found how it works within their county.
Also how it doesn't work, because we've heard horror stories at KAC about counties and. Uh, 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 and it's like, we don't wanna be that, we wanna be someone that we can, that we can all get along and work together and.
It sounds like on this. Building the policy manual, it's like, we haven't even got the foundation secure yet, because, you know, if we're lawfully on the basic. Premises, who is responsible for the law? You know, the rest of it's moot until we get that down.
I agree.
Well, I as an elected official. Love working with Jody. I push whatever I can, because she's the more knowledgeable of. Onboarding, the. Some of the policies and such. But, I'd like input in the policies, but in two years, in six years. If I'm not here, you don't know what you're getting. So you can write a policy for the people that are here now, but in two years, four years. It, you may have issues, no matter what policies you have, and it's all in the character of the person. But it's all in the person, the character of the person.
I will not be here thirty years.
What you do now is. Critical to make sure Jody approves.
To be that, it makes more sense that it would just be. Appli, applicable the exemptions, uh, to the department, to the elected official, because. When that elected official changes, when like peer, periodically do. Well, that whole department could change the way they, just by that. Just the, with the policies they implement, and of their own, you know, when you get a new elected official, it's like. Okay, this one is strict and this one's not, you know, and. It'll give you the consistency and clarity for your employees, so that they don't have to worry about a transition. Then there'll be that half a dozen things, it might be a little variation, it can be discussed.
That's why I feel that I'm in favor of what Gary County does, with each elected official they sign off, acknowledging or not. On that piece of paper, so that when there's a new clerk or new treasurer or whatnot. That new one comes in and they sign on.
Well, but also for us, as a board, if we're. At liable or at, you know, the fingers are pointing, we say, well, you know. They chose not to participate in our, in our personnel policies, like. It's, it's a text and balances at every level to make sure we're holding. Everyone accountable the same, I just. And maybe, I mean. Not just elected, but department heads in general could sign, like, I'm following this, like, that way. We're holding our department heads accountable the same across the board. Person, like, personnel know what to expect, where to expect, and they're not gonna jump ship, because I can have a tattoo if I work for Joe, but not Jody, like.
Exactly.
You know, I just think consistency makes all of it just so much easier. For all of us to know what's going on and who to ask and. You know, it's just. That's a perfect world scenario, so hopefully we can accomplish that on the thirty first.
I will continue to work, I will dissect our book as needed, um, but it is a task. And I'll send you the Gary County signup. Um, form that she sent me, and then, um, also the Lyon County. Book, because.
So it sounds good.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, thank you.
Can you read through statutes, can I just look those up?
Yep, I have them all, I'm printing them actually, and gonna have.
I was gonna have to print them a little bit ago. Let's see, it was a PDF. So I'll just do that later. You know.
Yes, sir, we're still.
So, I talked to Dave Beach, and.
If we do the two miles. And just the two miles, everything for that two miles. Our cost is gonna be around seven hundred thousand dollars. If we go over, like if we try to do the rest of the culverts or whatever. Then it goes up dramatically. From that point, but our cost share would be around seven hundred thousand. And there's no guarantee, so I. I think that's probably what we ought to do. And then that way, and then also, I sent you, I sent you, that's culverts, that's everything on that two miles.
Yeah.
And then, uh. I also got all the K dot. And depending upon if we're awarded. We could have almost two. Budget cycles to work that seven hundred thousand in, instead of just one, we could have two. So. I wanted to check that.
Yeah, definitely.
So I just wanted to give you that, that information that I got. So, I haven't, I told him just to figure the two, the two years, for the two miles, and then we'll go from there. You guys are all on board with that.
Okay, and he's gonna let them know that we're, we're going to actually do the eight.
Well, we'll, beans that switches roads. I mean, well, yeah.
Oh, I switched me, yeah.
Yeah, cause when it gets down there, then it switches to another road, but I've gotta go back and. Excuse me, write a bunch of stuff and get sent in to him. So, but like there's LSR piece, the local road safety plan stuff. That will be taken care of while we're doing that, and then hopefully will make us look a little more attractive. And then reasons why this road needs to be. Fixed, cause I have to have all it in this afternoon or first thing in the morning, so he can get sent in. So.
Did you need to talk to me?
Well, this is what I was trying to, this, this is what I.
Oh, okay, I thought you.
Yeah, no, I, no, no, I just was hoping I could get here before. Before the meeting was over and again, get a chance to talk to you about it.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that or anything?
I don't think so, I think it would be, uh, when you, when they do the submission, you would approve that.
Right.
Cause we're gonna, we're gonna submit it. Thursday, so. It has to be submitted by Thursday, and then what happens is when it's awarded, then we have to sign.
Right.
A bunch of stuff there, so.
You're, you're right, it's that going.
Yeah, it's, it's all, I mean. So. Thank you very much. Want to put this up in here?
That old comment. Uh, public comment? Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, oh, okay.
All right, seeing none, I would like for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Then move to second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn at one thirty-five PM.